Good morning, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. First, is there any items from the public? No items from the public? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I make the motion we approve the agenda for August 4, 2022 if there are no modifications. I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Purchase order log. Let's see. Tracy's not here. She's hopefully on the mend pretty quick. Any questions on the purchase order? No internal?
Budget revisions?
Yes.
Change in status, none this week. Approval of the minutes. President Copenhagen and Council Gokunaro were not present, so it'll be us three.
Mr. President, Tim, I wish to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 21, 2022 as presented.
I'll second their motion.
All those in favor say aye. Three of us, aye. One abstention, possibly two when Mr. Copenhagen returns. Where was that here? Council calendars. We are here today on August the 4th. September, not there yet. Tonight in Marnesburg, Burke County Public Library at 5:00. Monday, Water District, Farmland Protection. Wednesday, Development Authority and Roundhouse Authority. On the 10th and then the 11th, we have 6:30 Fire Board. Been going through that. September, okay. We have a bond reduction at Middlecrick Manor. Phase one. Phase one, BCP file 67-03 tied to BCP number 2110-369. Letter of credit 1197, Engineering Department. We do both of these here at the same time. Then a bond reduction for South Brook, Section 1, Phase 1, BCP file 2202-163 tied to BCP file 2107-246 and 2105-176, bond number 0798308. That's in Engineering Department. Do we have any questions for Doug on those two releases?
One is a release and one is a reduction.
I'm sorry, one is a release and one is a reduction, I'm sorry. We'll do the release first.
They're part of a section.
Oh, yes, they are.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any questions?
None.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Correction of assessment logs. The Honorable Larry Hess.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
Had a little bit again this week. We had a busy week. First thing we have would be taxpayer error at 3:00. And they all reported vehicles in Mark Mall, so we had to add the bill on. But anyway, those three taxpayer errors comes up to $1,223.16.
Okay. Motion to approve the taxpayer error log?
Mr. President, I agree with step 3, taxpayer error, personal property exonerations in amount of $12.23.16.
Second.
All those. I have motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed?
Aye.
Motion denied. Eight personal, I'm sorry, eight property taxes.
Yeah, personal property office there. We got a total of eight of them. And for those reasons that are listed there, they total up to $696.38.
Okay. Motion for the office error?
A motion to approve the assessor request.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Real estate?
Right, real estate. You really got, you get, you get three pages of them. I think we got a total of 21. There's eight on first page, eight on second page, and then the five on the last page. As they're listed there, you can see the reasons. All of them were at wrong tax classes, that type of thing. If you want to make a comment on the last page, on the second page, the three last listed ones on the second page and all five on the last page, they were the same person, were the Michael Helmick. And what happened with that, there's eight of them. And the reason why, they came out with those death on deeds that are due on death.
Transferred.
You know, and they don't transfer until somebody passes away. Well, they started getting popular back 10 years or so ago. We got, this one, when we got it, we don't transfer them until somebody passes away. This got transferred back to eight years ago. And the lady had homestead, so it was transferred to her son, who's, he didn't qualify for homestead. So the homestead got taken off. It's been away for eight years. So we corrected them for eight years ago. So that's the reason why you see eight of them. But it wasn't her fault, and she didn't get her homestead insurance for those eight years.
Okay.
And just wanted to make a comment on that.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering because Mrs. De Haven is alive and well. I'm glad she's here.
Yeah.
So I was wondering what I was looking at.
Yeah, this doesn't fall. Then we have an issue where we went back so far, and we can only go back so far to make these corrections. Does this fall under that criteria?
I would check. I mean, this is for Taxpayer 2022, and then it has all of these. Only been eight years, so I think I should go back first.
I thought we had something that we did a few years back.
And we only went back five.
I thought that we could only go back five. I thought that's what we were.
I thought that was a figure that we picked. I don't know if it was.
Yeah, I don't think it's the law. I don't think there's any regulations that say you can only go back five. But that's kind of a norm for a lot of counties, stick with five. But that's kind of a norm for a lot of counties to stick with five.
Can?
But it's up to you guys.
Can we remove these five, or these, I'm sorry, these eight?
Yes.
Give us an opinion and then we'll bring them back and do that. Can I have that motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we pull these pending.
Legal advice?
Yes.
Have a motion to have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Okay, we'll go back to the, might have to give us a new figure on that.
Yeah, well, we have to take those eight off.
Eight all.
I don't have a calculator, but the total, you see the total of all three pages comes up to $25,764.20.48.
You could table the entire exoneration until next week.
That might be better. Okay.
All the real estate?
Yes.
All three of those pages? Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Do we withdraw the first motion, Anthony or just?
Yeah, me just.
Okay. Motion to table? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Application for consolidation.
Yes, sir. Yep. Have a couple. First one's for Anthony Roach. He had two parcels in the Arden District, map 12J, Parson's 13 and 17. He wanted to consolidate them to get one tax bill. So we did that. They have another one for Curtis Heth at a few parcels in Jerrisale District. Map 30L, parcel seven and parcel two. Same deal on the, put them together to just get one tax bill. We have another one for James Beckett. Same deal, Jerrisale District, two parcels in the map 34C, parcel 10 and 11. Just wanted to get two tax bills. You want to do them? I have one other deconsolidation, which we.
We'll do that separate.
Separate, okay.
Motion to approve the three consolidations.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. And a deconsolidation?
Yes, sir. Just for Lucinda and Alan Wees. They had 14.20 acres and they were all consolidated. They wanted to split a couple pieces out of there, so we divided them back out again. So we've got three separate parcels. We split them back out again. So the four acre tract, five acre tract, and another five acre tract. So we did that so they could sell off one or two of them. So we got that deconsolidation.
Okay. Motion to approve. All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed.
Must be something in the air. We've got three more divorces. We've had more divorces in the last three weeks than we've had all year. But any rate, the first one for Heather and Adam Blackburn. They had two vehicles and with a total assessed value of $24,750. And we split those up. Each one got a vehicle and so we can make them a separate bill. So you want to do all three of them at the same time?
Hmm, yeah, I think so.
Okay. The second one's for Adam Ward and Margaret Ward. Same deal. They had two vehicles. They just won a total assessed value of $14,115. We split them up so they could get a separate bill. Each one of them took a different. And we had the last one for Jonathan Bowles, Katie Scarlett Smith. Two vehicles and a total assessed value of $5,565. And we split that assessment up. Each one of them, one vehicle, so they did pay that separately. But those three divorces.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the separation of portions due to divorce?
I'm moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
All right, good. Oh, I hear.
All right. See you next week with the revisites.
All right.
Board and meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tim, I had no meetings this week, though I did spend Tuesday evening at the youth fair. Me and Council Person Gokunaro and my wife, she was there for the phone case, but we won't get into that. You tell it like it is, you know? And talked to some people and sorted it out.
Okay. Mr. Yehi?
I didn't have any meetings this week, but I did have an opportunity to go by the senior services and look at the flooring that was installed. Very, very nice building. The flooring made a huge difference. There's a much, much cleaner smell in the building now than there was. Yeah, and you really didn't notice it until you go in now. There's a, you know, big difference in the, it was a little musty smell.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? That's Person Gokunaro.
Yes, sir. Attended the county commission conference in Oakley Park and really Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. And it's had some very good discussions. State Auditor JB McCusky was there and his staff to give some guidance on the ARCA funds and all of the legalities involving that. Matt Harvey also spoke in reference to the recent jail bills across the state. And which I'm really glad to say that we're, you know, we're doing everything that's humanly known to keep our jail bills down. And congratulations to the folks that are all involved in those programs because it's obviously saving us, the county, a lot of money. Senator Tar was there and spoke on Amendment 2. And, you know, the projections of their budgets and all that involving that. So of course, there's still a lot of fear involved with that as from the counties and the cities, whether they will prove to be made whole or not. And I'd like to say, I did attend the youth fair with Mr. Barnhart and his wife Linda. And I'd like to just publicly congratulate and thank the fair board folks and all the volunteers. You know, and hats off to the parents for having their children, getting them involved in really good programs. And, you know, I just hope that the kids appreciate all the work that their families, that they have, and everybody involved that makes that happen. Because that's what a great event. And yesterday I had a development, executive board for the Development Authority. And it's just discussion over the new director's position.
Okay. Thank you very much. I did not have any meetings myself.
So we will move on.
The, let's see, we're a little bit early. Alan, is there, for the bid opening?
I can give you some background.
Sure.
The first, we actually have two bid openings today. One for labor materials for the addition and renovations to this building. As well as a bid opening for conflict resolution and communications training, which is a, which is a part of an ongoing grant that will be received with the Department of Justice. So we'll start with the Dunn Building. Your first bid opening is for the labor materials needed for the renovations to the Dunn Building as well as an addition that will be made to that suite, which is currently occupied by the Fire Board. The RFP was made available through Crabtree, Lorval and Associates, their bidding department. We had eight different packets that had been picked up. We also placed a Class 1 legal ad in the Martinsburg Journal. What's that appeared on Wednesday, July 6, 2022. We do have certification and publication on file in your packet. Pre-bid conference was held at 10 o'clock a.m. on Friday, July 15, 2022. We had a number of contractors in attendance. Anyone in attendance had the opportunity to inspect this building from the basement all the way to the roof. And I know a number of them took the opportunity to do a thorough inspection. Just as some background, this project, as the council's aware, was actually started in December 2020. At the council's direction, we decided to, to, as you know, Blue Ridge Community Technical College, when we moved in this building, when we purchased the building there on the first floor. And then once we moved out, we moved some departments around and brought some departments in from 110 and 126 West King Street. And it was kind of a piecemeal process. It was a little bit haphazard. And at the council's direction, we wanted to make this building a little bit more customer friendly so that we put the majority of our high-volume, high-traffic departments on the first floor. Then those departments that still had some traffic, but was more, provide more of an internal service on the second floor. And then finally, IT, the IT department would go on the third floor where the extension service is. The extension service will ultimately, we moved out to 750 Baltimore Street. And that process is going well. Jack and his employees are currently pulling the IT and communications cabling. They've already pulled the wires. We ordered the drop ceiling materials and we're currently in the process of getting bids for the flooring. So we hope to have the extension service moved out by the end of September. And they are currently actively packing up everything that they have. It's a few bucks there now. You'll see, it's the boxes. The project is eligible for funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. And the council has committed to using those funds for this project. The preliminary cost estimates for the project in total, including architectural fees and some other miscellaneous is about $7.3 million. And if everything goes as planned, we hope that all the renovations to the building will be completed no later than the end of calendar 2023. Bids were due no later than 4 o'clock p.m. on Wednesday, August 3, 2022, which we gestured. We had a number of contractors in the hall that were waiting for price quotes from subcontractors. Unfortunately, apparently those, they were not be able, were not able to get their prices from the subs. So therefore, when we closed the bids at 4 o'clock p.m., yesterday, we had only received one bid. That bid is from Cooper Building Services out of Frederick, Maryland. We have not done business with them before, but I did go on to their website late yesterday afternoon. And they're a large firm. They do business. They do business all over the country. A lot of federal contract business, but they have done state and local business also. So that's all I know about them at this point.
So maybe in the future, how long was the lead time on the, for the proposal?
The RFP went out, Kevin, over a month ago, I believe it was June 29. So it's been a while.
Right. So it was, how long was it allowed? 30 days to respond?
Right.
Yeah, I can see where that's going to end up. You know, it used to be years ago, not that many years ago, actually, prior to COVID. You could look at, you could look at your history of what you were doing on the last job and those type of things and look where you're going and be able to predict where the costs are and put things together. And in the market today, you can't do that. It changed so rapidly and so extreme that you have to end up getting quotes on everything. And I think that's probably part of the reason why, why you're not getting a response. And maybe, maybe it's ought to extend those out further in the future.
Well, I was, this is, you know, we've gone through this process before. So I did reach out to Kevin and Josh down at Crabtree. And Josh did respond and said that unfortunately, this seems to be a growing trend. That they just put out a new elementary school for bid, about a $44 million contract. And they only received one bids. And contractors are telling them that either one, they don't have the capacity. They can't get timely subcontractor numbers. And they're concerned about the long-term material lead times and costs, so.
Yeah, and it goes back, you know, years ago, I could contact, I could contact one supplier and ask for, ask for an estimate on what it's going to be. And, you know, he may send me something, say he's locked in for 30 days, but, you know, you just need the signature, whatever, to hold it. And they don't hold the prices anymore like that. So you can't get that part of it. But the other part of that is that if I reach out to that supplier, now that supplier needs to go to where they're getting the product from and get confirmation that it's going to come. So you just extended the chain of what you have to do in order to get prices. And it's a lot more difficult today than it's ever been.
Okay. Well, we've got one bid from. Make sure I get this right. We've got Cooper Building Systems LLC from Frederick, Maryland. Total bid packet, and just reading off the first page of Attachment A price proposal. Should be the first one. Nine million, $76,000. And that's what we have. All right. I'll give this to the building committee and let them review. Got to do a reappointment here. We did receive a.
We had one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
The second bid opening, as the council's aware, Eric Grant's department, working with the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Communications, and Berkeley Fair was able to obtain a considerable, it's actually a three-year Department of Justice grant. And it helped us as part of it. It really dealt with employee wellness, community outreach, and things like that. As you know, we, within the past month or so, we did open a bid for some relaxation, training, yoga, things like that. This portion of the, of the bid, of the grant is actually for conflict resolution and communications training. And it would include all of our uniform law enforcement personnel, our emergency management employees to include Berkeley Fair, as well as all of our emergency communications dispatchers. It's not to exceed a total of 133 employees. The training would include assessment, assessment for each participant as well that measures their communications and conflict resolution skills. And then the training, the successful company would provide at least two professional trainings that would offer three, four-hour classes to be taught at the Sheriff's Department and three, four-hour classes to be taught for emergency management and 911 personnel. Training is to begin no later than September 1, 2022. Be completed no later than March 30, 2023. We did post a Class 1 legal ad in the Martinsburg Journal. That ad appeared on Wednesday, July 22, 2022. You do have certification publication, not only in your file, in your packet, but we also have it on file. The deadline for proposals was yesterday at 4 o'clock. And we received one proposal also for the conflict resolution and communications training.
This is from the Institute of Leadership Development. Is that right? Is that right? Cost includes two professional trainers for a total of six four-hour classes to train 133 employees at a per-person rate. Cost includes estimated travel and lodging, access to conflict and apology-style assessment tools and results in the course materials. Twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
I see this program right here being very, very valuable, especially to our law enforcement, to be able to de-escalate something that they're giving their skills that they may or may not already have. But just the temperature across the country of how things, how quickly everything escalates, that not only will, will have, hopefully will have a better outcome, but in all honesty, reduce our liability as well. So between them and maybe even the dispatchers, you know, if they get somebody on there that's, you know, being very controversial over an issue, that they would maybe be able to resolve it a little bit easier with their training. The firemen, they get along with everybody. You know, they're.
Shoot them down with the hose.
Fireman's cool, you know, they're good. But I'm just saying.
That's not a little biased opinion, is it? How about the yoga stuff that we approved? Do the firemen feel they should be getting yoga classes?
Jack's, that's really, I don't know much about yoga. I really don't.
Didn't sit around and wonder when you're going to get yoga classes?
Mr. Williams says the officers have really responded to that well. They're enjoying it.
Maybe I should try.
He says they're doing good. The classes are going very well.
It was getting them in those yoga pants that was the problem.
Oh, no. We're not going down that road always.
Yeah, well, it's good. It's good if it helps relieve stress and all that stuff. It's a good thing.
All righty, okay, I'm going to back up on the agenda a little bit. I missed a reappointment packet was received from Nick Deal for the Transit Authority. His term expires September the 2nd, 2022. Did he, he's got everything turned in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Can I get a motion for reappointment there?
Yes, sir.
May I get a second? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose? Thank you very much. Two bid openings next on the agenda, right on a little bit early. Mr. Stansberry, come on up. You're the next contestant on the prices rate.
I hope the price is zero.
Okay, well, maybe it is.
I'd be right. I'm representing the Civil War Patrol, the Martinsburg Composite Squadron, West Virginia Wayne. And we're going to be adding, do something to our van and some of our other equipment. This van is used to transport in search and rescue, but also in our jet activity. I'm going to try to get some of the material out of the hangar and away from the airplane we don't like near the airplane. Very simple, it's going to be, we're taking out of the USDA's armor building book, simple, little structure. To have the courtesy of being able to let the bees for the building.
We just don't put enough.
Hasn't gotten that far yet.
I had a discussion with him to help him do a little bit of excavating, so. If it need be.
We've had some members work on the hangar. I appreciate it all. But before we do that, if I may, deal a few more minutes. As we know, we have had some issues with flooding Kentucky. This is from Public Affairs Officer Lieutenant Colonel Hackett. Just a little notice, Civil War Patrol air crews from Kentucky and Tennessee continue to take to the skies. We sit Kentucky's National Guard, Kentucky Emergency Management, the search and rescue operations because of the extreme flooding of communities in Kentucky. Air crews have been circling over, head the affected area this week to provide critical communication support to Kentucky. Air National Guard, in addition to our patrol members, have provided support at Kentucky Emergency Management, Emergency Operations Center, training communication. Those who go to the airport, Air Force knows we have it now. Our radio power is up, and with the theater, we have independent communication to address the state. Four teams, squadrons in the state. We worked on Air Force frequencies. More on that, that's in a nutshell. And these are the same services we provided to West Virginia. We had that problem for two years. That is, that is what our mission is on the other two sides of that. So this is why we need a little bit of protection for our van and our equipment.
I remember back, it was in 85 flood that went through Petersburg and mic'd out Moorefield and all that. Actually, FAA closed the airspace down over that area only for, Civil War Patrol at that time was the only ones ever allowed to fly in with a military personnel.
We were the only ones besides fighters in the air. Same thing, they were flying over the tower, giving the ground people some direction on a bird's eye view.
All righty, there, the amount you see in the read ahead is for $433.24. What's the?
Mr. President, I would like to move to allow the Martinsburg Squadron, Martinsburg Composite Squadron in West Virginia Wayne and the Civil Air Patrol and grant the release of $433.24 for the permit for an addition to the movement out there.
Have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dirk.
All right, good for there. Mr. Lawrence, and you are up with 52 estates for approval.
You got time to read all the names?
I don't think anyone wants that. Good morning, Council. Today, as Councilperson Whitaker said, I have 52 estates to be settled for their final settlement in Berkeley County for the month of August. The 52 estates are identical to those found in your read ahead and published on July 5, 2022. All estates named therein have had adequate legal notice for all interested parties concerning their settlement. And to date, no objections have been filed pertaining to same. Furthermore, your list includes two estates, the estate, the estates of Charles Eugene Nesmith and the estate of Edith Lee Howell, which are up for interim settlement, not final. The same notices went off to the interested parties and were published on the same day, July 5, 2022. Similarly, no objections were filed with my office. Date, without objection from anyone here present today, I ask that this council approve the 52 estates for final settlement as well as the two estates for interim settlement for the month of August 2022.
Okay, I've heard your request. Looking through the names here to make sure I don't have a conflict with anybody before I sign. I don't have any, I think so. And I have a motion for the estates.
I motion, I make a motion, we accept the 52 estates for approval as presented.
Sorry, hold on.
Sorry, there were also two interims. So 54 total, 52 final, but two.
Plus, plus two interim estates.
We have a motion and a second to the 52 final and two interims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
I do have an estate hearing for scheduling for the estate of Lawrence E. Williams and is in need of this council's consideration to probate a copy of a will in song.
Thursday, September 1, 11:00 AM. It's on the agenda.
Take care of that one.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Sure, yeah, we're running. Do we want to break here just for a second until she gets here, or do we?
Just want to hold on. She knows sometimes she's pulled up already.
Larry, I'm surprised you didn't have a comment.
For my.
Citizen's comment.
Thank you. I thought I'd give you a little break. That's my gift to you.
That's not much of a gift.
That's all I got.
I like that jacket, Anthony.
Thank you. I like yours. I was thinking about it. That's a used car sound.
Both.
Used vehicle.
I do, I like how the trim is around the, around your collar. That's sharp. Call you ZZ Top now?
Well-dressed man.
Sharp dress.
Your wife pick that out for you?
Probably. They give her all, give mine all the accolades, a smart move.
That's how I ended up with this.
Because you wouldn't want to see me dress myself or pick out my clothes. I can dress myself and just want to see me pick out my clothes. Okay, Tracy, come on up.
We're good.
I want you to raise your hand.
All yours.
As the council is aware, in March of 2021, Congress did pass the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 into law. And it provided funding to be used to help local governments nationwide with COVID-19 pandemic recovery assistance. In total, we received $23,147,570, with the first half being received in June 2021 and the second half of June 2022. The American Rescue Plan Act guidelines require that all funds be encumbered and committed no later than December 31, 2024. Through the Treasury, at the Treasury Department's final rule, local governments are allowed to address some negative economic impacts to nonprofits who are recognized by the IRS as 501(c)(3) entities. And it's primarily to assist them through revenue loss, increased costs, and other operating costs. We discussed this matter with the council in May of 2022, and you decided to set an amount not to exceed $2.5 million of the American Rescue Plan money as a side to assist 501(c)(3) agencies in Berkeley County who were negatively impacted by coronaviruses. During the period, January 27, 2023, December 31, 2021, you did approve a grant application packet, which Tracy Gilliam and Tracy McMorley distributed. The application period was from May 12, 2022 through June 30, 2022. Eligible packets were distributed directly to all agencies that have ever received funding from Burton County. In addition, we did place a Class 1 legal ad in the Martinsburg Journal that appeared on Tuesday, May 17, 2021. Tracy and her staff did review all of the applications that were received, and the applicants were deemed eligible for funding under the ARPA guidelines. And you can see their, the recommendation, the recommended agencies, the amount of funding, and the total amount of the local grants of $1,236,074. Tracy, what do you want to add?
Pretty much covered it.
They're all, they met the guidelines. If the council decides to approve this list, Tracy has developed an agreement, which has been sent to Anthony and Jeff and I, that we will have each agency sign. They will have to follow certain guidelines that are established by the, by the ARPA. And we will monitor through that. The last thing we want is for, for whatever reason, if they decide to audit the use of this funds, these are actually sub-grantees of us. So they have to comply just like, like we will. We don't want, and I'll use, you know, South Berkeley as an example, not because I expect anything, any kind of malfeasance from them, but say, for example, they decided, the council decides to allocate $200,000, and for whatever reason, they don't use it for what it's intended to. The last thing we want is for the federal government to come back and say that it was, it was misused and they in turn have to, we in turn have to pay that money back. So if you agree to this list, it will be closely monitored.
Okay. I think it's been well-reviewed and well.
Tracy and her staff have done an extraordinary job.
All right.
Any motion to approve?
Motion and a second, and then the discussion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is all the agencies that applied?
This was all the, there were some agencies that applied that did not meet the eligibility, and we returned their application to them and told them.
I mean, not because it's a 1.5(c)(3) or whatever.
These were all the 501(c)(3)'s that applied.
Okay.
And if you approve this list, then we'll develop award letters for the council's signature probably next week, and then we'll start working with the agencies.
And I think this is part of the intent of the funding that was given from the federal government to be able to make some of these entities whole that had issues with, with funding during the, during the COVID. So I think it's totally what we should be doing.
Now, we will have a separate discussion on the 18th of some supplemental funding requests that have been made that did not qualify for ARPA. It's the funding requests that came up during our normal budget process, but that will be separate from this, and that money would come out of the general fund.
We talked about that when we were doing the budget.
You did, and you asked me to keep a running list, which I have.
Okay. Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye for the list that's been presented. Like, sign, opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
I just want to point out why Tracy's here. I don't want her to get a big kiss. But she and her staff are rock stars. I mean, they, they stay on top of things, and there's nothing that I ask of them that, they don't have an answer immediate, that they, they don't research and get back to you pretty, pretty fast. They took lead on this, and I just really don't.
Worked it great.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that. You know, this week at that conference, some of the discussion from the State Auditor's Office was about these funds. So I'm, I'm taking notes, you know, and I had the opportunity this morning to speak with Tracy and her, her staff about it. They've, they've got it, they've got it all checked off already, so.
It's odd, ever since we hired a grants administrator, we always thought that that grants administrator was doing a slam-bang job. And then the next administrator, it's like, oh, man, this person's doing much more. And now we're up to Tracy and her group, and they're doing a whole lot more. And it's like, golly.
I took this three tries to get right.
Yeah.
I'm glad you said it that way. You make, almost make her feel like we're looking for another one to go even higher, you know what I mean? Don't, don't want her to get that impression.
She says she's not going anywhere, so I'm hoping to it, too.
Well, Tracy, thank you for your.
You're welcome.
Dedication to this county, not to us, but to this county for what you do.
I enjoy it. Your own Elizabeth enjoys it. We enjoy working on behalf of the citizens of the county.
And they're the ones that benefit from your hard work, so.
I'm certain all of these entities are going to be happy to benefit from what you've been doing.
You know, you look at the ones that's going to be receiving them. It, it does go directly to the citizens, basically, and, and it's not to that entity. It's what they do for the, for the community. So, you know, the, the essence is, is that we're, we're doing the right thing with, with the money that the government told us to do it with. Thank you. All right. Now, I think it's time for a break. Anything else going on here at this point, or is there?
No, sir. You're good. It's 10:45.
All right. Penny, put us on break.
We're back in session. Next on the agenda, Mr. Brian Costello, Director of Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. With his entourage, Joy.
Yeah, I have Chief Wyon Brenner and my operations manager, Joyce Shrecklin. This will all be kind of giving you little bits and pieces of this. We do apologize for not getting it in your hands and your read ahead because a lot of this data we were still working with up until yesterday afternoon. So you have a small packet there. Of course, the front tells you that you guys tasked us back on 6:30, 7:07 to start looking at how we go about moving forward with a commercial fee structure for an ambulance fee. To do so, we've been working on that quite diligently. You know, the second page there, we asked ourselves one question. What was the goal of the county council? And the group working on this believed that the goal was to reduce the amount of encumbrance on our homeowners and funding public safety, specifically in this case, the ambulance, emergency ambulance. So on the third page there, we adopted our mission statement, which is kind of threefold. How do we structure a commercial billing system that is fair and equitable based on set parameters? Structure it in a way that recovers the revenue's loss through homeowner fee reductions? And ending in a cost-effective implementation that is sustainable for years to come. Those are the things that we really got into. So we'll move on from there. So what have we done so far? As you guys asked, we met with County IT Director Gary Wyon and his crew, Brad Race, who else was there, Nick and Alex? And we looked at the information they had, and they had over 17,000 data points. Now, what we're calling a data point is an account. Okay? Now, the first thing Joy noticed is, hey, a lot of them are in District 6. We've got to back those out. That's the city of Martinsburg. So we backed those out, got us down around the 10,000 mark. So then Joy and I started filtering through over 60-plus descriptions as to what these accounts were. Anything from active farm, inactive farms, auto dealerships, bars, lounges. I've got a whole list here that goes on and on. So we began to back these things out. There was also data in there that we already had captured. You know, single resident units, residents over top of a commercial unit, what they would call mixed residential, commercial. So we started to back all these things out and got ourselves down to about 3,272 data points at that time. Joy said, hey, this seems, you know, like a lot. We talked with the fire board based on their numbers. And then we reached out to the assessor's office. And was it Carol?
Caroline.
Caroline came over from the assessor's office, sat down with us, looked at the data that we had, wanted to know where the data originated from, and started, you know, helping with us with that too. We got down to about the number of right around 1,800. And then that also matches what the fire board has that they're utilizing down there. So the last thing that we did was look at the business licenses that are listed for Berkeley County on the Secretary of State's office. And we had a number around 12,526, most of them listed in the city of Martinsburg. We haven't found a way yet, one of the things we're doing is, is there a way to take that number and pack it out even further as to what is strictly outside of District 6? So that's something we're working on. So that takes us to our next page, which are questions we still have unanswered in creating this structure. Do we look at building occupancy versus an employee count to determine a fee or an amount or where someone may fall? Do we do by building square footage? What you'll see in here later is just a quick down and dirty structure that we came up with. And in there, what we said is, okay, if the International Building Code allocates seven square foot per person in a building that has nothing in it. We divided that square footage by that seven, came up with a number, and created 10%. And that's where we went from there. The other question we had is, as has been stated in the past, we don't want to hurt the home-based business.
We're back in session. Next on the agenda, Mr. Brian Costello, Director of Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. With his entourage, Joy.
Yeah, I have Chief Wyon Brenner and my operations manager, Joyce Shrecklin. This will all be kind of giving you little bits and pieces of this. We do apologize for not getting it in your hands in your read ahead because a lot of this data we were still working with up until yesterday afternoon. So you have a small packet there. Of course, the front tells you that you guys tasked us back on 6:30, 7:07 to start looking at how we go about moving forward with a commercial fee structure for an ambulance fee. To do so, we've been working on that quite diligently. You know, the second page there, we asked ourselves one question. What was the goal at county council? And the group working on this believed that the goal was to reduce the amount of encumbrance on our homeowners and funding public safety specifically in this case. The ambulance, emergency ambulance. So on the third page there, we adopted our mission statement, which is kind of threefold. How do we structure a commercial billing system that is fair and equitable based on set parameters? Structure it in a way that recovers the revenue's loss through homeowner fee reductions? And ending in a cost effective implementation that is sustainable for years to come. Those are the things that we really got into. So we'll move on from there. So what have we done so far? As you guys asked, we met with County IT Director Gary Wyon and his crew of Brad Race, who else was there?
Alex.
And we looked at the information they had and they had over seventeen thousand data points. Now, what we're calling a data point is an account. Now, the first thing Joy noticed is, hey, a lot of them are in District Six. We gotta back those out. That's the city of Martinsburg. So we backed those out. Got us down around the ten thousand mark. So then Joy and I started filtering through over sixty plus descriptions as to what these accounts were. Anything from active farm, inactive farms, auto dealerships, bars, lounges. I've got a whole list here. It goes on and on. So we began to back these things out. There was also data in there that we already had captured. You know, single resident units, residents over top of a commercial unit, what they would call mixed residential, commercial. So we started to back all these things out and got ourselves down to about three thousand two hundred and seventy-two data points at that time. Joy said, hey, this seems, you know, like a lot. We talked with the fire board based on their numbers. And then we reached out to the assessor's office and was it Carol? Caroline came over from the assessor's office, sat down with us, looked at the data that we had, wanted to know where the data originated from and started, you know, helping with us with that too. We got down to about the number of right around eighteen hundred and then that also matches what the fire board has that they're utilizing down there. So the last thing that we did was look at the business licenses that are listed for Berkeley County on the Secretary of State's office. And we had a number around twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-six, most of them listed in the city of Martinsburg. We haven't found a way yet. One of the things we're doing is there a way to take that number and pack it out even further as to what is strictly outside of District Six? So that's something we're working on. So that takes us to our next page, which are questions we still have unanswered. In creating this structure, do we look at building occupancy versus an employee count to determine a fee? Or an amount or where someone may fall? Do we do by building square footage? What you'll see in here later is just a quick down and dirty structure that we came up with. And in there, what we said is, okay. If the International Building Code allocates seven square foot per person in a building that has nothing in it. We divided that square footage by that seven, came up with a number and created ten percent. And that's where we went from there. The other question we had is, as has been stated in the past, we don't want to hurt the home-based business. We don't want to hurt that person that lives upstairs but runs their maybe accounting office out of their basement. Because day or night, we're going to the same place if they call nine one one. Churches, lodges, are they going to be exonerated? You know, if you go by occupancy, you know, a church could have a three hundred person occupancy, but that only occurs on two nights a week maybe. So those are things to consider. What will that criteria be as you see there? Of course, our big question is how do we reflect this in our ordinance? Because that's ultimately what's going to, you know, give us the right to do what we do, but also back us up when someone wants to challenge.
Well, if you have, and I'll use Mr. Vance's file as an example because he's sitting there. He runs a whole business out of his home. It's a construction.
Yes.
He has an employee that's at the building site.
Travels in maybe?
Well, and the building site's ten miles away from Leroy's home.
Correct.
And he needs ambulance service.
Correct. These are the things that we're still discussing. We don't disagree by any means. We just have to come up with how this is going to be done and implemented.
I don't, I feel for you.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna go that way, what happens to the guy that has the construction company in Winchester? And does most of his work in Berkeley County?
Yeah, it just broadens out.
There's, you know, there's so many things we could, so many things that we could capture and look at. I think we start very basic. And figure out what, what is our goal ultimately to start? You know, what are we looking at and move from there? Like I said, we do have, you know, just the down and dirty in there that we'll look at here later. And proof of ownership for validation, that's a big key. Because right now, if a homeowner comes to us and says, hey, I sold that home. It's not mine. We go into the database from the assessor's office and say, well, if you've sold it, it's still in your name. You're still responsible until you go take care of the paperwork at the assessor's office. So we have that tangible proof that we need. We're not sure how we do that moving forward. But it's a challenge, not a problem, just challenges. That's what we got here. And then through conversation, you know, just brainstorming, Councilman Goke and I brought a fantastic idea to us. Hey, instead of billing on the fiscal year like we do for everything else and someone catching a large sum of bills, why don't we look at moving that bill to the calendar year? And how businesses usually function via calendar years a lot of times. So that was an idea brought forward that we think is a good idea. It might be something we look at moving forward in this. So before we get to that bottom thing, I'm gonna allow the chief to come up and go over some of the pie charts that you guys have in there for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one. And then what we had at that time was for quarter three of twenty twenty-two. And then I'll come back up and get into a preliminary stab at a fee structure.
Good morning. Just to go over with you guys, how we collect our numbers. When we first started to pull numbers in for business reporting, our charting system is where we collect all these. We went through and did a lot of work. We validated thousands and thousands of charts to make sure that you guys had the most accurate numbers here in front of you. And one thing that we did was we condensed all businesses down into one single category. Because for the purposes of what we were looking at here, we didn't know that it was beneficial for us to differentiate between large industrial, medium industrial, things like that. But when you look at that business category, that could be anywhere from Procter and Gamble to someone that owns a beauty salon out of their town. So just keep that in mind, that all those calls run the gamble in the business. Obviously, we think about Macy's and Procter and Gamble as some of the larger consumers of EMS services, which they are. But if you guys need those numbers broken down at any point more specifically, we can provide those to you. Street and highway is always busy for us. Obviously, the majority of our responses and treatment is to residents. So if you take out residents and street and highway, that leaves you about fifteen percent. And you see three categories are split pretty evenly. So your public building and facilities. Eastern Regional Jail is number one amongst those. Eastern Regional Jail is a very large consumer of our service. The schools as well. We run some calls out to DHHR, occasionally out to state police barracks. So any local, federal, or state that can build, we consider a public facility. You'll also see that pretty neck and neck with our business utilization is our healthcare facilities. And this is one place I'd like to keep in mind as we move forward. As I've explained to some, healthcare facilities, specifically urgent cares, move into our communities with EMS. Nine one one EMS is part of their business model. And what happens is, is they have a treatment algorithm and that patient is outside of the algorithm that they can treat. Their providers are told to call nine one one and have that patient transported to the hospital. A lot of medicine, especially outside of hospitals, is done on liability. So that means that we take a fair number of what we consider non-emergency patients out of urgent cares. Patients who outside of that system may not be seeking service by ambulance. I think we have an opportunity here to look at that particular population because they are a guaranteed user of our service. And at this point, all that costs is getting passed on with that individual patient. Those patients may be out of county residence. They may not be paying a household fee. And I think there is an opportunity there to really drill down on urgent cares and also nursing. Any questions on our call spread?
As I said, you have a number of pie charts there. Now we'll move on to that preliminary stab at a commercial fee structure. I really need to make sure that we give credit to the ladies down at the fire board, Donna and her group. Because she was the first to offer up data to us. The way that they do things, we kind of mirror image this to what they do down there. You'll see a seven tier system based on square footage. Those numbers are just numbers that we threw in there, nothing specific. As I told you earlier, the way we came up with number of employees or occupants or whatever is chosen to go there. We looked at the International Building Code, took the maximum square footage divided by, or the minimum and maximum divided by seven. It took ten percent to come up with those numbers. And then we added an employee modifier. Is that if, if a building is at that size, operating with employees beyond that, if the employee is the way that you go, then you can raise that fee up a little bit because the potential utilization goes up. If you choose occupancy, then you probably wouldn't need that because that's going to be set based on the max amount of people that should be in there at any one time. And then we even went into an exoneration criteria. As we said, we may have a thirty thousand square foot structure that has eight people in it at any one time. And if employees becomes the way that you go, then that owner might say, hey, I've only got eight people here. I'd like to have a little bit of a break. So that's kind of a down and dirty there of a structure that we built. You can see by the note at the bottom, if you're going by employee count, well, the one thing we're gonna do is put the responsibility on that employer to do an attestation letter annually that tells us how many employees they have. Because if not, then we're gonna bill based on what we believe the max number of employees to be. And, you know, whatever we can find out through investigative records. So just to kind of give you a roundabout start, if we were to utilize what you see here, that would put about three hundred businesses in tier one, five hundred and fifty-six businesses in tier two, three hundred and twelve in tier three, a hundred and one in tier four, twenty-seven in tier five, twenty in tier six, and forty-nine in tier seven, as we know standing here today through our research. If we build based on those numbers, that could, could potentially with a hundred percent pay, bring in about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Now, the first thing we gotta do is look at what our operational cost would be. And we believe that to be between operational cost, billing upgrades, postage, printing, processing bills annually, probably about sixty-two thousand five hundred to start. So that could potentially bring you a margin of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars. So that, I think those numbers round out to about thirteen hundred and fifty, thirteen hundred and seventy-six accounts. And we know there's still more that we have to capture. So this is our first stab at it to give you guys some information on where we are. I think what we continue to do is continue to hear your input and thoughts. Because the folks are, you know, they're calling my phone complaining about the fee. So I'm gonna see if they're gonna come to call you guys and tell you how they'd like to see things do better. So we're gonna continue to work this based on your guidance as to when and if you want to see some sort of imposition. And I think I'm gonna step aside and hear what you have to say. And then I think what we need to do is set down another follow-up time as well.
Have you considered fairs and festivals and all that kind of stuff?
Special events, it's in there, but that one's kind of, that one we have to figure out. I don't think that's an issue. That's just how is, how is that going to be?
Well, it's like a shawty acre.
Yes, shawty acres. When shawty, and this is something I haven't really researched into, when shawty acres puts on a program, I'm sure they have to provide something. Do they come here for an event pass or who do they have to get? The health department. Right? So maybe what we do is reach out to them and say, okay. When someone comes to you for an event, you know, we need to be part of that to pass on an event fee for that? Or that person may come to us and say, hey, I'd rather hire you guys to come work my event, however they may determine.
I had to find out for sure because West Virginia court, they offer that tulip program.
So one of the, one of the things they do at the health department is they require bathrooms, portable toilets for so many people. So if you had an event, and I say that like when we have, we do the Wyon Festival, they ask what your projected amount of people are going to be. And then you have to have so many portable toilets per hundred. So you can probably gauge off of those numbers because they have to come up with some type of number in order to do that.
Tomahawk MX has to have responders there, is that correct?
We used to work Tomahawks MX until our call volume went up and then we handed that off to Patient Care Transport Services. So they're required to have them out there to run their events. So I think in those cases where they're handling, you know, you have a choice for you to pay the fee or you hire the folks to work your event. I think that would, that would work.
Do you have the campgrounds as a commercial?
Good question. Let's see here. Here's my list. I do not see campgrounds on the sixty-plus list of descriptions. I have cemeteries.
Well, that's a big call for that.
Well, if somebody's coming up, I want to know about it.
If they're using the fee. No, I do not see campgrounds on there. But maybe what we could do, looking at an event fee, is reach out to someone in the health department, you know, Bill Kern or someone that he refers us to. And say, hey, when folks come in to do an event with you, you know, can we either sell a contract with you or whatever to make sure that either event fee is done or they have to come in with a signed contract of EMS coverage?
I thank you for what, I know you guys have been working hard on this. You know, I spoke to you last week about it. And, you know, keep grinding the sausage. You know, it's, it's not easy. I know it's not. You know, you've been in place since nineteen eighty-eight and we've never done this. And maybe it was because it was difficult. But we need to be able to go back and push that residential rate down. Hopefully, if nothing else, to the ones that are on homestead exemption. And there's about seventy-five hundred of those folks. So, or homes that are on homestead exemption, to be able to take that commercial rate and push that, that rate down on the ones on homestead.
Now, I'm not familiar with homestead exemption. Is that something that happens every July in the fiscal year?
You have to apply for it.
Over a certain age, approximately sixty, sixty-five.
Disabled or age sixty-five, you become eligible for that.
And of course, I know we had the conversation, if anybody, you know, when we talked, we talked earlier about proof of that, they can go right over here. If we can't see it in the system, they can go over here and get someone that says, yeah, they're on the exemption. We can square that away there. So that would be easy.
Well, they can bring a form because I think you fill out a paper for that. So they can, you know, bring their verification to you.
So what if we started there? Well, we know this is bigger than something we're gonna fix in the next, you know, forty-five days or something. If we could start there and start to work our way constantly evolving, that might give us a start point to look at. If we can generate the funds based on those numbers, you know, what are you looking at there? About a hundred and some odd thousand?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If that's a start, starting point, we can jump off there, see if we can't get to that and then figure out what the next step is.
Yeah. I, I think that'd be probably one of the easiest starts to be able to do and the most beneficial.
Okay.
To me, that's the most beneficial to the folks that are currently on fixed incomes. Maybe, maybe now it's, it's just a widow, you know, it's in that home or widowed. So if we can push that number for down for them, I think this would be a real good thing.
Okay. Well, I think that's definitely something that we can begin to focus our energy. I think we're all kind of like out here right now. So I think if we can narrow it down and focus to something and get that going, and then that might help educate us on where the next step is.
Explain your exoneration criteria based on employees count less than minimum occupancy?
Yeah. What we were looking at there is, so if you look at a, let's say, tier three business, we would say that, you know, in our thing, you'd have a hundred and one to two hundred and eighty-five employees. So as I said, let's say that fifteen thousand square foot building comes in and says, hey, I only have twenty-five employees in that building. If we're doing it off of employees, then if they would do the attestation letter that, hey, I have twenty-five employees, we would offer them twenty-five percent. Or reduce their fee from the two hundred to the one fifty. Because they don't, you know, they're, the chances of utilization are drastically reduced.
I get you. So you're saying like a tier six, you're saying a tier six, the employees are going to be three hundred to seven fifteen?
Yes, because they're below the minimum amount. And then you would give them a reduction based on.
And the reason I'm saying is you have a warehouse.
Right, or a warehouse or something.
But we know with the data center.
Minimal.
It's the, the number of employees are minimal. And that's what, that would be kind of the business that would, would impact.
Correct. And that would be the big thing. And like I said, it really goes back to what we say. Are you going employee-based and then put that onus on that owner to bring the attestation letter annually? Or are you gonna look at occupancy? And I think during conversations, we asked you the question, is that something that maybe we reach out to the fire marshal's office?
I did. And it's, I think it's buried somewhere in Charleston. You know, when they do, when they did the inspections of the restaurant and bars, bars in particular, they did do their occupant count on a form, which at that time it was on paper. So I don't know how easily it's, will be pulled out.
So there wouldn't be an MSDS or something at, say, if you walked into like a Chili's and said, hey, can I see what your maximum occupancy is for this building?
If it's a, an assembly occupancy, it's supposed to be posted.
Yeah, that was my question.
But, and it's just like the hotels and motels, you know, figure out how many rooms they have. You know, and I would, personally, I would base it on a single occupancy, you know, for each room and go from there with them.
But the employee count, employee count doesn't work. You have to.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Occupancy.
Yeah, yeah. Because if I only have two people on staff.
Oh, yeah.
And you've got three hundred people.
And they're staying there, yeah. What about, what about your tier seven doesn't have anything in your exoneration base?
We did not build one for that. As of right now. It's, it's very, it's out there. So we would, I mean, you could almost, like I said, follow suit with everything else, less than that one thousand. than that one thousand instead of one below. Okay, subject to any questions that, you get questions, comments, ideas, uh, you know?
I'm sure when, when y'all render an ambulance out the door, you're giving service, your, you know, your calls vary, mostly residential, and then every now and then you do have to go to a place of business.
Yes.
And then you pick up that employee that doesn't live here in the county. Does their insurance, or is it through a worker's comp, is it through the company's insurance that we have to bill then, or is that just?
I could answer that, but I'm gonna give you the subject matter expert, cause I know she's waiting to call. I'm a wet joint.
I, I looked at Joy first.
I'm a wet joint. I could give you an answer, but she's gonna give you one a little bit more.
It would depend on the situation. Uh, we do have workers' comp. You know, some employee slips in some water and falls and we would, we would definitely know they're workers' comp. But if it's an employee that wasn't workers' comp and they have insurance, we're gonna bill their insurance. But then if there are those instances where people don't have any insurance, then it's gonna be patient responsible.
Correct. So how, I guess, looking at your travel to that place of business and then the patient refuses transport because of an obvious reason, we're still out that time an employee. So there almost has to be like a minimal coverage for that establishment, just to cover that issue.
Right now, we're billing that type of situation. If we just show up and we check your vitals and you're like, yeah, I slipped and fall, but I feel fine now, I don't need to go. You're gonna get a fifty-dollar bill from us and it is not billable to your insurance. And that is patient responsible.
So could you real quickly just go down the list on the pie chart and tell me, obviously the residents are, the residents are billed at the residence, right? So the, but you have a seventy percent, it looks like real close to seventy percent of your total runs is the residence. So you have thirty percent that's not. How do you bill streets and highways, businesses, public buildings, healthcare facilities, wilderness? How are those, other parts of that all billed?
They're all essentially billed the same. It's not based on where we picked this person up. It's based on their insurance. Um, if you have health insurance.
With the information that they give you.
Correct. Um, I mean, we could pick someone up in a wilderness area that's a worker's comp. If it's a police officer that's out there and is searching for a missing person and gets heat exhaustion and we show up, that would be a worker's comp. So you can't, all these areas, all these locations don't necessarily mean we're going to bill a certain way. We're gonna bill based on.
But they're all billed?
They're all billed.
Right. Because I could see, I mean, a wilderness area, you could have an enormous amount of effort put forward into a wilderness area, especially if it was in a river or something to that effect where you're, you know?
And we don't know when we show up, I mean, when nine-one-one is called and, and our paramedics treat a patient, not that they're thinking about it, but they have no idea what type of recovery we're gonna get. Whether it's an auto accident and we might get a hundred percent paid, whatever the bill is, auto carrier's gonna pay a hundred percent. But we all, I mean, Maryland Medicaid pays us a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars on any bill. It doesn't matter if it's a four-hundred-dollar bill, an eight-hundred-dollar bill, we get a hundred dollars and have to write off the rest. So when we respond and treat that patient, we have no idea and there's no control over how much money we can get based on that person's insurance.
Keep working hard. We gotta, we gotta get there.
We'll get there.
No, no problems, just challenges.
I know somebody's already reinvented this wheel. We just gotta find what works the best.
Well, we've even, I've, I've even had the opportunity and maybe I don't wanna use dirty words in here, but I even took the opportunity to reach out to Michelle Lord, the finance person in Jersey County, cause she was instrumental in building their commercial structures down there and wanting to know, cause the big thing for me is we have places that have EMS, you know, like P&amp;G has their own rapid response team that we train and we bill them for that training. So did they do anything, say, for the casino because they have their own in-house EMS? And she said, no, because the fact is, is yes, you can treat them, but you can't move them anywhere. We have to come get you and move them. She said, it's great that you got them to where you got them, but ultimately it ends with them doing some sort of transport. So that was a big question that we had and just some other things. And she's definitely opened the door that we can reach out to her and she'll spend time, you know, talking with us to give us any type of insight we may have. And as I said, I, I have to say, the fire board has been phenomenal, you know, working with us to help us understand what it is they've been doing for a long time. So it's been quite, quite helpful.
Sounds like we're getting a cart. We're just gonna get the wheel rolling.
I, I think we're headed. We're, we're almost to the top of the hill. We're not there yet.
Okay. Fair enough.
So do we wanna set a date to come back and?
How about?
I think it would, in my opinion, I still think this would be a great opportunity to have a public meeting and have, have some input. I mean, that's what we talked about first, was getting you guys to put something together and then do a public meeting and have some input from businesses on, on the thought processes that, you know, that they think, you know, things that were not considered, you know, to give them an opportunity to have conversation and, and, and talk about, you know, how their, their businesses work or, you know, just like we were talking about the square footage and, and that type of thing, how that's gonna work for them.
So is that something you would like us to host and put together?
Well, that's a, I mean, that's up to the council to decide if we're gonna do that and, and try to find a date to do that.
Well, if, if the whole council's going to do it here, of course it'd be posted. I would suggest if you, if you wanna do that, that you incorporate that into your, your meeting schedule.
Right.
And Brian and I can work together on that.
That's what I do try. I mean, I think that's the best thing to do.
I think the more ideas that we have, the better it will be at the end of the day. You know, like I told you earlier, we'll put it all on the table and when it, when it, when it doesn't work, we'll start knocking stuff off and we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, but, and you're never gonna satisfy everybody. I mean, nobody, nobody wants to pay more fees, you know, because then they have to charge more for the end product or whatever they're doing. But the result is they also wanna make sure that the ambulance is there when they need it.
Agreed.
How about if you do your normal business meeting in the morning and then we set aside, almost like a workshop, that you have for you to do a public hearing?
Yeah.
I think that'd be very good.
We, we're talking about businesses though, or is it makes sense to do it after hours? You know what I mean? I mean, if we're going to do it, I would think it would make the most sense for, if you're going to get businesses to come in here to do it after the normal business hours so that those businesses, especially when you're talking about the smaller businesses, have an opportunity to be closed and come in and have a conversation.
I'm available twenty-four/oh-seven.
How about the evening of the September fifteenth, July?
I mean, our goal was to try to come up with something by the end of the year, isn't that what the conversation was?
Well, I think you guys have given us some direction to get started to where we can have something by that time.
September what? September fifteenth.
Uh, won't be here.
How about the eighth?
September the eighth? I'll be here.
Eighth is fine with me.
Make it the eighth.
Eight, any?
Eight as in?
Six, six P.M.
I think that's a good time.
Does that work for you, Brian?
Actually, no.
Okay. Perfect. The eighth it is, six o'clock.
And we'll put out a notice.
We'll let Doug know.
And it'll be part of your regular meeting agenda. You'll just, you'll just recess.
And come back.
And then you'll come back in session at six o'clock.
Well, I just wanna thank you guys for the support that you've shown the Amis Authority over my time here these past eight-plus years. And as I said, no problems, just challenges. We're gonna figure it out. We'll get something going, get it started. You know, hopefully the community sees the effort that not only you guys, but the Amis Authority's putting into this and understand that we're not these money-hungry people that I've been getting phone calls about for the last few weeks. But you, thank you so much.
Thank you. All righty. Next on the agenda. Running a little bit behind, but Jennifer Smith and Sandy Hamilton, the Development Authority.
I'm not on the agenda, I'm just in the wings, but.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to acknowledge that you were here too. So Jennifer, it's all yours.
Hi, thank you and good morning, or maybe it's good afternoon.
We're still morning.
Still good morning. So I wanted, the purpose for today, in October twenty-twenty-one, there was a, a resolution for a industrial access program that was made for Red Rock. The money for that grant program was all allocated for that year. So the purpose for my meeting today is to see if I can get a new resolution for this fiscal year for the same project. And also in the resolution, I would need some more identification on the project name, the amount, and also the fiscal year. I do have a copy of the one that was done in October last year.
And this, it's, the Development Authority has requested this from the council on a number of occasions.
Last year, or in twenty-twenty, it was for CROPS.
Yeah. And there's no funding required from us. It's just, it's just the resolution.
Each county gets, each year they can request up to four-hundred-thousand dollars per year. There's about three million into the fund and each county per year can request up to that.
I think when a county has the type of growth that we have compared to southern counties, I think that, that needs to be a little bit of portion changed. But I understand why the way it is, just, you know, when we're an economic engine for the state, I think that we deserve the recognition and the help that we need. That's my two cents.
What's the deadline?
So the applications just opened July first. They, it is the fiscal year, so they will close. However, the sooner you get the application in, you wanna make sure that the money doesn't, isn't all allocated before the application's.
You should have the resolution from last year. So if you give Penny the additional information.
Okay.
If you were, if her, we can get it on the council's consent agenda next week.
Okay.
They can, they can adopt the resolution next week.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll do.
Okay, the council, if I can sense it's okay.
Very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, just work with Penny.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Back on schedule here and just a little bit ahead of time, Mr. Leroy Mansbaum, Environmental Health Department Training for Inspectors.
Thank you very much. Thanks Leroy Mansbaum, known as Bill, been here all my life, since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been a small custom builder in this county, also a class-two septic consultant. So I tried to be patient here the last couple of years with, with the new people, okay? And quite honestly, my wife worked for GCHR in the state for twenty-two years. I don't have to tell you what the pay is. You know, we are revolving the door for new people and that's okay. It's okay when they say, I don't know. I think my theme today is gonna be, I don't know. I've asked even the chief, like what's the difference between the oxymorphone and the chroming, modeling? I don't know. But if we don't know, it's not fair to the person out there that you're affecting by a six figures. Now, I have those figures today. I have eleven septic systems that are on hold. Five they don't know about because they've lost the payment. I have one that I'll get to, I'll, I'll be on schedule, I'll put you back on schedule, okay? Because my big thing today is, I have a project that I was asked by my surveyor to, to look at. So as a builder slash developer, I'm in four subdivisions, three in Berkeley and one in, one in Morton, small. But he'll call me in and he'll say, look, you know, I get the challenging ones. And as a builder, developer, I'm the plan drawer, I'm a one-man operation. We try to get our septics to be gravity-fed. And, and yes, I think there's a place for class twos, even though I don't wanna, my colleagues, I don't wanna say, hey, look, you know, we do a lot of class twos that are not needed. So I had, um, let's get to the big project. The big project was, well, a guy comes out, doesn't talk to me, I'm out there on the job. He's inspecting five holes. Now, that particular, back at the end of Dunham Lane, it's on a convex, okay? We're gonna talk a lot about the convex and concave and you're gonna know better than anybody, you know, we were spoiled. We were spoiled over the years to have people that knew the difference between wet modeling and dry modeling, okay? So now we've come into a situation where we have new people who don't know that difference. So a little guy comes out, inspects five holes, at the end I go, okay, um, we're good with five class ones. I'd already dug fifty perp holes to get five pitts. I'd do my perks first, cause if it doesn't perk, there's no need to dig an observation hole. So dug fifty, I'm happy. I've got my perk rates, I got my perk rates from twelve to twenty-four. Of course, I'm accused of fudging my numbers, but you only have to move, when you're in shale, you only have to move fifty feet to, to get a good area. Or you'll just move down, you'll move down on the slope, but you can't move in the concave where the water's gonna come out of the hill. So I'm up on a convex or a hill or a knob, whatever, however you wanna call it. And I, I move and, and I'm there, I'm in December. Then I was accused of, well, you guys do all these in the, in the dry times. I'm in December, cause if it's gonna perk, it's gonna perk in the wet times or it's, or it's even in the dry times. But if it, if it's a good hole, it's gonna perk in the wet time. So comes out and, you know, I think I've got five class ones hands down, you know, I'm working, and I had actually pre-done these before the person bought the sixty acres. So we're up on, and I, you guys, I don't have any information, I, I could just, I have piles of information. This has been going on since December. I've had these holes open since December. And so a little guy goes, I go, we're good with five class ones. He goes, I don't know. I go, Jacob, what do you mean, you don't know? He goes, I've gotta go back and look at the book. I go, your book's in the truck, let's talk about it now. He goes, oh, I'll have to go back and look at the book. And I look at him, I'm, I'm bewildered. You know, with the things that I've had with the Health Department for the last year and I'm running a home, it doesn't surprise me. So I wait for a couple of weeks and I'm going, no way. You can't, you know, you can't look at the soils book, cause the soils book is not a hundred percent correct. The soils book might be seventy percent, it might be seventy-five, but if you move around, especially.
It's a generalization.
It's a generalization. I'll, no, but it's the Bible now, cause they took the soils book and it says, um, and I'm gonna read this, it says, we're in, we're in the Wicker Burke such and such, and he goes through all this. But the biggest thing about these five holes, when he denies this, every one, he says, has modeling. But every one has root structures to the bottom of the hole. So if, if it's, if it's wet, you're not gonna have roots. And I tried to explain this, the first meeting I had with Mr. Hall and Kara, I said, guys, you're telling me this is modeling, but we've got roots, we got roots to the bottom and we don't have standing order. And I said, you know, I've done this for a long time. I'm sixteen years old, I love Lawrence Spink. I did my first, my first septic system was fifty years ago, okay? I'm not perfect. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a soil scientist. But if I take the backup, that's turning the bucket upside down, cause this is, this is what they told me too. is what they told me too, it's three foot. All of my holes were exactly 60 to 64 inches. And she goes, "They're not six foot?" I said, "They're 60, 64 inches?" She goes, "Yes." I go, "Wow, that's a compliment. I never even got out of that seat." And, and I dug all of those within four inches. She goes, "But they're not six feet?" I said, "They don't have to be." You know, I looked at little Jacob one time when he comes out, and I said, "Do you know what a three plus room is?" He goes, "No." I don't know. I said, "From the bottom of your ditch, you have a 36, 36-inch separation." Okay? Again, I don't know. So we get through that meeting, and I tell him, I say, "Look, you have turned down two lots, you said with modeling, and you've turned down three, basically, this is going to be Class II, or you're going to have an HAU." And I said, "Do you realize how much money this is going to cost this, this family? And these are five perfect holes." I'm not saying they're not perfect, but I'm saying, so I, I throw out this, and I say, because if I pull out the Class II, it says, basically, out of my Class II training manual, it says, "Evaluate four-foot hole. You can evaluate a four-foot hole if you're only trying to just dig, right? Three-foot separation." So that didn't go over good, because they didn't like my narrative of, "I've been doing this a long time, and if you want to turn somebody down, I'm okay with that, if you don't know. But if you don't know, then I think it's a right of that individual homeowner to say, 'Let's have someone else look at it.'" "Oh, no, well, we don't have anybody to look at it." I go, "Wait a minute, you don't have anybody to look at it?" I said, "Normally, they would go to Ed Wheeler, you know, down at the regional office." So I, I end up going to the state, I end up becoming a whistleblower. I'm like, "Don't be close to me, because I have the bull's eye in the back." And I'm okay with that, because I'm 1,000% correct on this job. So we go on, and I said, "Look, I've got to appeal this." Okay? So the first thing they do wrong is, I don't get the procedure right. They don't get the procedure right, because they try to send me to Rick Hertz. Now, I've been here for a long time, so the last thing I want to do is talk to Mr. Hertz. But I call him twice, and he doesn't call me back. She tells me to send my information in. What am I going to do? Because if I talk to Mr. Hertz, me and he, he and I are going to talk about spring farm lot number five, okay? And that's kind of a joke at the Health Department, because his, I had to change one that his company did back 20-some years ago, that was five-foot-tall rock, okay? I'm, again, I'm okay with all that. I didn't make a big deal about it. I don't know if it was you, or, or maybe, I just said, "Look, just move this to third, we don't have to do anything else." So the end of the story is Judy Blandeham, I called her, the, the second meeting that I had with, with, oh, I've had so many meetings here. I had it with Kara, Kara and Bill. So I go to, and, and in that time, I'd hired a soil scientist. I talked to Doug, I said, "Doug," I said, "This is wrong." And he said, "Well," he said, "you know, there's nothing that we can do." Judy Blandeham told me, the meeting, the morning that I'm going to this one meeting, she, she's supposedly Rick Hertz's boss, and she goes, "It's all goes back to either the commissioners or the county council, you, this is what, quote-unquote, she told me, we, you can't come to the state anymore." I said, "Well, who are we going to go to?" I said, "I already have a soil scientist report that says that this, they don't know the difference between doxymorphic and lithochromic." And, you know, Jim and Keith, we never had an issue, okay? These guys knew the difference. They knew the difference from convex and concave, okay? I'm on a convex with 100-foot fall, okay? And they're telling me we have wet holes with, but we have, we have vegetation all the way to the bottom. But anyhow, you and I both know, after we make two dips for the backup, we know it's going to be a good hole or not. We don't even have to perk. If we've done, if we've done it for 50 years, or 40 years, or 30 years, after we take two dips, we know if it's going to perk or not, because it's, it's how, how hard is, is the machine going to work? But anyhow, so, so he turns all these down, and I don't know if you've ever seen this, in 2011, this is an eight-inch-tall chamber, okay? It's the same, same as 12-inch chamber, made by the same company. So I threw that on for my first meeting, and I said, "I don't have a problem with Class II's, but in this case, we don't need Class II's." I said, "Have you ever seen this?" She goes, "No, I don't know." I said, "Okay, but I'm just going to tell you something, that if you put this in at 12 inches, it's kind of like the Elgin now that's going to, only Class II people can do it." This is so simple. I told them, I said, "You could have, what you guys are doing to us now, but not, not us, you're doing to the customers, is you're making this only be able to be Class II, Class II installers. This is so simple, and it's approved by the state." She goes, "We don't..." I said, "Yeah, I, you, you know, I have the proof that this was approved. They're so simple." But anyhow, we, we go on, because I'm telling you, they're Class, they're Class I's. So here, here is this, here is the soil scientist out of Virginia, who's done this for 42 years for the USDA. He goes, "The soil survey of Berkeley County shows that the areas in question were mapped WBC, Wicker Berks, Channery silt loans, 8 to 15%. These two soils are both well-drained and derived from shale and siltstone parent material that occurs between 10 to 40 inches of the soil surface. They both have silt loan texture that are permeable. They do not flood or pond. No wetness models or doxymorphic features were observed, which would indicate the depth of the water table. Lithochromic models, which are colors retained from the geological source rather than from the podotogenesis, or gray shales, were observed, generally as layers of gray, orange, and reddish color within other shale siltstone layers. Small fragments of gray and red shale were found in these layers. There are some black organic coatings on some of the fragments found in most of the soil pits. All the soil pits were once under forced cover." I take this in, and she goes, "Too bad, we've already made our decision." And I go, "There has to be an appeal process." She goes, "Yeah," she said, "so instead of them letting me go before the Health Department Board, she lets me check in at times, too. She lets me, she makes me go to Rick Hertz. Last thing I'm going to do is talk to Mr. Hertz, because he's just going to tell them, and I have his letter, and it says, and I showed it to the soil scientist, and I could go on and on about this, because this is just, this is the craziest thing in my, in my career since 87, that I have just, people aren't willing to talk, they're not, it's not like Jefferson County. I even went as far as having, I had a meeting with Peter Chapman, and I sat down with Mr. Chapman, and I threw all this on the table. He looks at me, and he goes, goes back in his chair, and he goes, "You know, Leroy, it sounds to me like someone needs to be fired up there, just like they, they, we fired the people in Jefferson County." And now Jefferson County, I talked to Phil Pitzenoff several days ago, Phil loves, loves doing septics in Jefferson County, because they actually email, they email the sanitarium, "This is the time, we're going to evaluate your hole, and we'd like you to be there." I was told, quote-unquote, "You won't be able to talk in the sanitariums," because, and that's where we, I had a problem, because I talked to some of my, my colleagues, and he talks to me, we get, we get into this $75 fee. I've been doing this for so long, I've, I've never put a septic tank stake, because as a builder, I'm the designer, I'm the one that's supposed to do the job right, so it doesn't cost the consumer a lot of money, because the septic tank is not going to be, we have to move it 20 feet to get out of limestone, that septic tank change, is going to change. So I asked several of my colleagues, and I asked one colleague, and all of you know the name, he goes, "I don't even know what you're talking about." But I paid him $75 last year, three times, okay? Twice, they couldn't find it. And I had my surveyor, Chuck Sager, go out on every job. We set our corners, we do every, everything right. So one day, I'm talking to this one guy, and I said, "If my name, my name was Bill Johnson, you'd have called him on your cell phone, am I correct?" Because I talked to Bill Johnson, and Bill Johnson goes, I'm, I'm asking him, I go, "Bill, what about the septic tank stake?" Because I always said, "Sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't." And he said, oh, as a matter of fact, he said, "Jacob called me on his cell phone four weeks ago, standing on my job, said, 'Is this where the septic tank stake is going to be?'" And he goes, "Yeah." He said, "Then you're good to go." Now, I've talked to Kara about this. We, we got a double standard here. It's whatever feeds, that's the narrative. Because I've complained, and because I've went to the state, because I've sought legal advice, I'm right. I'm 100% right. The Health Department, Environmental Health, like, I told Doug, I don't want anybody fired. But we got to train some of these people. If you don't know the difference between doxymorphic and lithochromic, and you don't know that, call them wet or dry, and you're up, you're up on a convex, and you get turned down, and, you know, here's, here's Mr., here's what happens. I, I did a little spreadsheet that this family, that this, until they, they got to redo this. If you took the difference between five Class I's and five Class II's, number one, Class II installer is not going to say, "I don't want to do a Class II," because it's double or triple the profit, we all know that, okay? And if we deny two lots, let's just, fees, let's say they're $50,000 apiece. We come up with, I come up with $135,000 to $150,000 that somebody needs to pay, because our county did it wrong. They need to have somebody go back down and look at these holes. Mr. Hertz says, "Well, I'm not going to do that." I said, "I'll leave these holes open. I've left these holes open since December. Well, now, we can't come out." I said, "Listen, I don't care if you come out or you don't come out." I said, "The attorney's going to tee off on you guys when you keep saying, 'I don't know.'" I realize, again, we're, we all know, it's really difficult, because we can't keep good people, because, you know, we're the, we're really not in West Virginia here, we're part of Maryland and Virginia. And everybody that comes here, you know, for whatever reason, they'll go to the other state soon as they get trained up. But anyhow, Mr., Mr. Hertz comes back, and he goes, "I talked to him about evaporation rates. Why did we go to Class II's?"
You've ever watched my comedy?
Okay. If, we, we went to Class II's, and unless he had a different course than I did with the state, he says, "Evaporation rates don't matter. Why did we go from 36, now we're 24?" Okay? But technically, I will say to Glenn, I've, I've looked behind him, several people called me, you know, the key is, now you just, you know, we always do ours at 19 inches. Ours at 19 inches, we're capturing more evaporation rate. But no, he goes, "During the winter and early spring, the rain, rain amounts are exceeded evaporation rates." So I, I talked to him about, about HAU's. Family of four. Let's use 1,000 gallons. So you want to charge a customer $1,000 for an HAU on a Class I system? On a Class I system, supposedly, they say, doesn't have any modeling, Class I system with an HAU, $1,000. Mechanical now, gravity-fed, we're going to do HAU. Take 1,000 gallons, so we're going to treat 1,000 gallons, we're going to use something mechanical to treat 1,000 gallons. So, but if we have an 80% evaporation rate, in that little chamber, I'm telling you, that little chamber itself has a 90 to 95% evaporation rate, because we're getting it to the top of the grade, okay? So he, he just, to the narrative, he does that. So I ask, I send this to soil scientist, and he proceeds to say, "Wicker soils are notoriously shallow," and he goes, "They're also associated with clearbrook." He goes, "Clearbrook shales." He goes, "I can just tell you that, number one, Mr. Hertz is not a soil scientist, and he's fully, you know what, because you only see clearbrook on the concave, you don't see clearbrook on the convex." And so, you know, we go through all that, and, and, you know, this soil scientist has been doing soils for 42 years, and of course, you know, they don't like to hear, they don't want to deal with it. So I go before the Health Department, and I'm on the agenda. I think I'm on the agenda. Doug, and you were there. I get a letter, I get a letter from an email from Kara, I'm sorry, from the, who's the head of the, who's the lady?
Ms. Poland.
Ms. Poland. Ms. Poland says, "You weren't on the agenda, because you didn't have your paperwork." That is very faceless. Bill Kearns and Kara told me, "Get us all the paperwork that you have." So I emailed them, and I gave them all the information. So you guys might not have been on the agenda, or, I don't know if you had your paperwork in, my paperwork was in. They just didn't want to hear me. They didn't want to hear me tell them that they, they've cost a family $150,000, and who's going to deal with that? So, you know, this keeps going on, and for the last couple of years, this kept going on, and I've been really patient.
Have you gotten a denial letter?
Yes.
Or five denial letters, or whatever?
Just one letter with all, all five of them on.
So you've got five lots, five house sites, on...
About 13, 14 acres.
Okay.
Okay, but the, the family owns, they're not, it's not going to be a development. I have two denials, but I have three Class II's, so...
Okay, has any of the houses been built?
No, they can't build them.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to...
And, and my point is, as of Monday, we're under 2018 IRC. So I figured that in, it's going to be another $6,000 to $12,000 per house under 2018 IRC. So not only did they, have they cost this family, they cost them the time, because it's not been approved, because they've denied two of them, so they can't, they have to do them all together, okay? Because it's not on a, a main road. So under planning and developing, can't do it until they approve them all. And so we've been going back and forth, and right now, I'm kind of at a standstill, because they're saying, "Well, we're not going to do anything." So she sends, Judy Blandeham from the state sends this back now, we're going to go keep going through all these procedures. I can tell you right now, if you had, I'm sorry, if, if you had just one person that knew what they were doing, to come out and look at these, they would go, "Really?" So he comes back, and Mr. Hertz comes back about rock. The funniest thing of this whole thing is, on my very first meeting with Mr. Hall and Ms. Harding, we sent these pictures to Mr. Hertz, and Mr. Hertz says, "I can't tell anything about these pictures." But if I read you Mr. Hertz's statement miraculously, as of a few days later, he got, a few months later, he, he basically says, "Oh, now with these pictures, I can tell." But Mr., yes, it's right in here, I got it, right here. Right now, I can tell by these pictures, that it's more rock than it is anything else. But back in December, he couldn't tell anything by the pictures. All I'm saying is, is that we need help. We installers need help, you know, yes. I am a whistleblower. I have, but I've been patient. I've been patient for two years, and I've paid my $75 this, and I've paid this. So you're probably, I was telling him, I, I didn't want to put him on the spot. So I have one that's been uncovered since last year. I refuse to pay my $75. They let me cover most of it up. So I have a four-bedroom with a perk rate in excess of 30. So in excess of 30, we're using a multiplier of 80. Am I correct? 4/8 or 3/20? 4/8 or 3/20? Okay? Another sanitaryian, another new sanitaryian, comes out, and she, she red tags me. Now, I'm wrong at first on this, because I do 300 instead of 3/20. I call her up, I said, hey, you know, you red tagged me, um, can you tell me what I need? Can you tell me how you did the math? And she goes, I don't know. I said, well, you red tagged me, how do you not know? She goes, well, here, I'll give you to my boss, he'll help you. So he hands me to Glenn. Glenn says, you need 3/20. I said, I know that. I know I made a mistake. So I'm going to read, where, the little girl comes back and goes, and here's her red tag, says you need 12 more inches. The permit, the permit is wrong, it says I need 5/65s. I tell them in the very first meeting, back six months ago, I said, your permit, your permit's wrong. Okay, well, we're, we're going to look at that. I said, okay, you look at that. So, she comes back, and I keep talking to Glenn, I'm going to do 3/20. I said, Glenn, I'm going to do 3/24, because I've got an extra chamber there, they're four foots, they're full foot, quick fours. So I do 3/24. It says, from her email, I, however, went back out to the property today with another coworker. We take two people out. I forgot to tell you, when I'm, when I'm back at Dunham Lane, three people. I'm really popular. I don't just get one person, I get the whole gang, because they want to kick my butt so bad for the things I've done. I'm okay with that. I like a good fight, if I'm right. If I'm wrong, I'm going to say I'm wrong. You know, and I got a lecture from Doug, to be not, to say I got a lecture from him to be nice. If I'm right, I'm going to fight you. If I'm wrong, I'm going to stop. So she goes, with another coworker, we, we both counted the chambers twice, and after the inspection, I told you, you were 25 foot short, and, but now, you have 3/24. I said, hallelujah, I got 3/24. You can't cover it up, because you need 3/25, says right here, you need 3/25. So, second meeting I have, I go over this again with them, and I said, you know, the biggest thing, and here, here's a, Ms. Harding says, on January the 6th, we're, I'm not, I'm letting you know, we still have a reinspection fee of $75. I'm not sure why somebody said it was going to be waived, because when I called in, they said, look, he said, you had your 3/20. So here's one, been uncovered, that I did cover the 300 feet up, she allowed me to do that. I got one that's uncovered. I got five that's uncovered up on the mountain, and I'm right on all of them, but yet, until I pay my $75, um, Mr. Kearns goes, just pay your $75 as an evaluation fee, and then we'll reimburse you. And I thought about it, you know, I said, okay, I'll do that, and then I said, no, I'm not doing that. I have it here in writing, that, that I'm correct. So this is what I've been going through. I know other guys have been going through, maybe not to the extent of me, but I got an invoice here for $150,000, somebody's going to pay, or they're going to have to correct what's wrong, because they say, I don't know what I'm doing. And if you don't know what you're doing, then you better be trained up, or you better be prepared, somebody better be prepared to talk to an attorney about it. Because I'm telling you, this homeowner isn't wrong. If they want to get at me, get at me, we'll come here, we'll talk about it, we'll yell at each other, we'll sit there and we'll talk about it. But the bottom line is, the Trucks family have been wronged by this Health Department, because their lack of knowledge of what they're looking at. I proved that from a soil scientist's point of view, I've talked to them till I'm blue in the face, and, so, is anybody having questions? Because I mean, I could go on and on, because I have so much information, but the bottom line is, we need help. We need a mechanism in place in this county, that appeals, and have somebody else look at it, like we, you know, when Mr. Wheel was there. Right now, that spot's not filled, I get that, okay? There were other people, and I, and I told her, I said, you know, I said, you need to send somebody else like this. Oh, no, we've already, we've already looked at the pictures. Okay? The pictures don't depict the fines. Okay? That, I've asked them, I said, I, I said, I'm entitled to the public record of your, your field notes. I need to see your field notes. How did you, how did you find out, that, you didn't take, did you take a picture of the fines that I dug out of the hole? No, but, they don't want to talk to me, they don't want to answer anything. So I'm just saying that, to you guys as a council, we need something, we need help here. So, that's, that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. Lee Boy, you, you probably done forgot more about septic systems than I even know, or perhaps even care to know, to tell you the truth. But, um, I think, probably about a month or so ago, you had had a conversation with, with Mr. Cope-Naber, and he called me, uh, that early afternoon, and was, tell me some of the issues that, that you were having. So, so, okay, you know, I listened to what he had to say, and I've, I've worked in a ditch, you know, but I'm, I'm not the guy, I don't know the difference between one dirt and the other, dirt's dirt to me. But, um, so, that afternoon, I was in a restaurant, I was getting ready to leave, and a long-time installer says, hey, come here, I, I want to talk to you. And, and basically told me, at the end of the day, about the same thing, that, that sanitarians, they, they don't have the experience, they don't have the knowledge, they don't know their soils. So, I go a little further, I start making phone calls to people that I know, that has been in the business, installers for a long time, anywhere from 30 to 40 years plus, and every one of them, told me the exact same thing, that they do not know their soils, and that they, you know, they, they come out, they do the inspections, they, they don't have the experience, they don't have the background, uh, you know, one lot may be fine with a Class One, they move over 200 feet, and all of a sudden, they need Class Twos. And like you say, they're licensed to do Class Twos, they're going to make more money, but it just costs the homeowner a lot more money. So, these people are licensed, they are certified by the Department of, of Health to do these installations, so, if it's a lack of knowledge, a lack of experience, uh, they need to find a way to get the training that's necessary, and also, on the appeal, that if there would be a third party, to be able to mitigate this, the controversy, you know, to, to find common ground, and this is what was accepted by both parties.
Okay, and we do, we do, it's kind of like, this family, for, I've been working on this project for a year, and we're no further ahead than we were last year. Now, granted, we could do, we could just say, well, they're all going to be Class Twos. You know, Kara asked me, she says, dig a couple more holes. Done 50. Done 50, what do you want me to do? You know, this is as good as it gets. I, oh, sure, I could dig a hole right beside of it right now, and it'd be, it'd be passed. But, but I have it set up so that they're all gravity fed, and this family can do it, and they agreed to me. I'm, I'm the one that has to be the bad guy, to customers and say, listen, your septic reservoir, it has to take the best part of the lot, and you have to be willing to move your hole. I know your dream is to put it right here, but you can't do it there, because, and, and she did, the Trucks family have moved two houses, and we had to flip them, and they were, they were agreeable. We're talking about the nicest people in the world. But I get to the Health Department, Health Department says, eh, no, we don't know. We, I don't know, that's my thing. I don't know. If you don't know, we need to get trained.
I, I think, you know, I think it boils down to that there's, uh, there's an issue whenever we have an entity that doesn't have an appeal process, and I think that's what it boils down to. I mean, it, it, from time to time, you're going to have failures in the system, and, you know, I, I don't doubt what you're saying one bit, that there's a failure in the system, you know, everything that you're telling us tells me there's a failure in the system, but the appeal process isn't with us, and that's the problem. Uh, it should be, in my opinion, with an elected official, so that you have the right to go to an elected official that is put in office by the public, to appeal your case and get some type of decision over, overrode, and, and that, that body should be able to go to that entity and say, hey, this is a problem we're having, what can we do, how are you guys going to correct this problem? And unfortunately, we don't have that, uh, we don't have that ability. Um, that's a legislative issue, and, and I agree, it needs to be changed.
So, where can I go next?
I, I think, I think you need to take your, I, I, I think you need to take this, and, uh, this, this whole presentation you have, and present it to, um, present it to members of our, our local legislation. We have delegates and, and senators in this area, and I think they need to know exactly what you're saying the problem is, because if they're not going to, if they're not going to fix it at the Health Department level, um, then, um, then it needs to be fixed in legislature. And I agree with you 100% that, I've talked to several, several installers, and they say the same thing, oh, no, we're not going to complain, we're not going to complain, because we, we got to deal with them tomorrow, we got to deal with them tomorrow, and we're not going to, we're not going to go down that road and have repercussions, because we're just going to go ahead and do what they tell us.
Well, that's fine and dandy, but I don't think Lee Boy wants to wait a year in the legislature to...
I get that.
So have you solved the problem? Something we, we, we need to do, and let's talk to the Board of Health, and try to work out, an agreement between us and the Board of Health to correct Lee Boy's issue.
And see, the other problem that I have is, the longer you guys wait, you know, I may look, look like I'm 30, but probably in five years, my kids are going to take my keys from me, so I don't have, I don't have...
I would have taken them before, but, you know... Did you say you look like you're 30?
I might look like I'm 30, but I'm really 66, so I don't have a long time to wait on this. You know?
So, Anthony, I mean, where, where do we stand? I mean, is, should we have a, should we, should we do a letter? I mean, do you think, do you think his argument hold weight?
Certainly. Um, my question to you, have you appealed to the Commissioner for the Bureau of Public Health in Charleston, there's an administrative appeals process.
You can say a letter?
Okay, because they're supposed to have a, a hearing, there's a stenographer there, just like you're in court, there's an administrative law judge, have you gone through that process?
No, because, number one, when it first happened, I just got that letter, af- after six months, the Judy Blandehan sent this letter, now this is your procedure now. The procedure was, first of all, I was supposed to have been able to go to the Health Board, I was denied that. Doug got involved in that, and then that's when, yeah, I went to the Health Board, what good did that do? They just, you know, they're not, they're not changing this, because it's going to open up a can of worms for them, because these other installers are going to say, you did this to me. I get it. I, I get where they're coming from, and I get what you said. I've had them tell me, you know, I, I don't have a problem fighting with somebody, if we're right, and we're doing it by the rules. You know, you know, $150,000 to this family? You know, somebody's got to answer to that. So, Dan, it's your question, yes, I, I now have, but if it has anything to do with the Health Department, they're not going to back me, and they're not going to back the Trucks family.
I understand, what, I mean, that would be up to the administrative law judge in, in the court, and that would be appealable to a court. That would be your individual process, that's for the council though, I mean, solving a general public problem, the council can't get in there and argue your case for you before that board.
Okay.
But, I mean, I...
We can argue to the board, that they need to establish procedure to hear this stuff.
Yeah, they do, that's what I'm trying to...
Locally, not at the state level, but at the local one.
Anybody that has a concern should always be able to come in, talk, they're local.
Yeah, exactly. Whether it be the administrator, or the health officer, or the Board of Health.
100%.
Yeah, that's sort of...
But that's...
That's, that's where we got to...
That's how they, I mean, they operate in a different way than we probably do here, where somebody asks a question, where yours are always up in the end, planning, engineering, file office.
And that's, and that's where we forget who we're working for. I mean, we're, we're here...
We're working for the public.
Working for the public, trying to help the public, do what needs to be done. That's what, that's what our goal is, and that's what their goal should be, not to, you know, not to dictate the worst-case scenario if you don't know how to solve the problem.
Well, the, the contract is between the builder and the homeowner, even though the Health Department has to come in and approve what the builder does, ultimately, me, him, you guys, who do this, we're the ones that's going to get the call, the Health Department's not going to get the call to come and fix something. It's going to be us.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's the part that I don't think that they understand, you know, we're not going to do something that's going to make us come back, I'll use me as an example, that, that I'm going to have to come back and do over.
Absolutely.
You know, I want to do it right the first time, and if what I do doesn't work, then I'm going to have to figure out how to make it right.
And, and by the way, I, I'm not being paid reader, my pay stopped back in December. I just, it's the principle of what is being done to this family, and I told them, you don't have to, you know, I'll do whatever, I, I, I don't care, I said, I'll go to Charleston if I need to. He said, because, this has to be fixed, we have to do something, and it can't be, I don't know.
Those are the, those are the most costly battles, is when you battle for principle.
Yeah.
And, and unfortunately, unfortunately, somebody has to do it in order to make something change.
No, and it, this is an easy fix. And, you know, you and I both know, Class Two septic, they're not, they're not that hard. You know, I, I, I kind of showed them, I said, well, I don't care if they're all Class Twos, but you got to, you got to state what they're going to, what they're going to be upfront, to keep the cost down for the, for the consumer. But yeah, Class, exactly what you said, these guys aren't going to come forward. The Class Two guys then aren't going to come forward, right? Because they're double or triple their money.
I, I've installed many septic systems, and I've installed Class Two, and I don't, I don't like using a pump system, because now you're relying on something mechanical. I've enclosed, I've installed actually LPP systems that are siphon systems when I'm on a hill, so that I didn't have to have pump systems.
Absolutely. And I designed each one of these for the Trucks family, they could use siphon if they had to be classed.
Right.
You know, and, and I, I even proposed, at 19 inches, I gave a proposal to them, I said, look, let's go 19 inches, and we'll do D-boxes, and we'll douse each line, and I use the evaporation rate, that's when Mr. Hertz says, ah, you know, we can't do that. Tell me some, tell me what this difference this makes. You know, that 18 inches needs to be changed, and I do think that, if we had more competition, that we, we would allow these smaller chambers, because I talked to some people about this. Oh, we don't know about that, but the ones that do say, this little chamber is equivalent to an LPP, it'll do, it'll do the same thing, and your evaporation rate's going to be lower.
The last Class Two class that I took, um, they preached shallow, shallow, shallow.
Shallow, shallow, shallow.
And that class, and that eight-inch chamber would be...
And it is approved in 2011 by the state of West Virginia. But I agree, the LPPs, do they work? They do. You know, and I, I'm, I'm okay with Class Twos. I don't want to do a lot of them, and I don't do hardly any of them, because I'm going to design, and I'm going to find the best spots, and I'm going to move, you know, when you're down there on Jake Smith Road, you know, where I've done three subdivisions, and you're on one side of the street, you're in shale, and the next you're in limestone, you learn pretty quick. It took me an entire summer to get Walton Woods, you know, just eight or 10 lots. I had to take my time, I slid trench to them, I did the whole nine yards, and, and it takes time. That's why I became an installer, because I couldn't afford to not be an installer, because when you're building houses, if you can do both of them, then, you know, you have to meet that customer budget. And you can't pay $25,000 for a septic system. And you can't pay $25,000 for a septic system.
I think slit trenches probably ruin more septic areas than they ever have.
Absolutely. But that's what they do.
And I think the problem with slit trenches is that they, I, I think the issue, the biggest issue with slit trenches, you're telling me as a professional that I'm going to put a system in where there's rock in it? Obviously, I'm not going to do that if I'm putting in a system and I'm going to do it so that it's done properly. And, you know, to put a slit trench in, and you know what? That, that doesn't even guarantee you're not going to find rock in the whole reserve area. It just means that one spot.
Right, no. I'm 1,000% in agreement with both of you. Neither Mr. Ormer.
I think with, with what Jim's saying, we get the, we have to have dialogue with the health board and some sanitarians. I think would be, I think the main one should be present, too.
And it's not, it's not that, you know, I've waited a long time to do this. And it's okay if they don't know. But they have to be trained.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to sound like it's us against them. Let's, I just want to get this worked out. So we all understand that what we're trying to do is for the benefit of our customer.
That's right.
Not for the benefit of one person.
And you know what? I don't have a problem with, you said, "But will you have to do it this way or you're wrong?" I don't have a problem being wrong, okay? Because then I would learn to be right. These little guys, and they're okay. I think one of the biggest problems that I see is this rotation that they're doing. They only see septic's 20 to 23% of the time. So there are hotels, motels, everything else, and they only see septic's. That's just my opinion, and I've heard that from some, some people out there. But, you know, that was the reason Keith wanted, didn't like your attention. You know? Anyhow, I don't want, I'm already ready.
Do you think it was the training will solve all the issues or do it beyond that?
My honest opinion, it depends on if the ones at the top are willing to say, "I need to learn." I think the ones that are doing it, young kids are resilient. They are, they're smarter than I am. They learn things quicker. But they can't sit behind a TV screen and try to learn things and not... But to answer your question, it's only 50/50. I think the persons at the top need to say, "I'm willing to get these people trained. And I'm willing to let you guys have input." But if they're going to say, like it is right now with me, "You know, we don't care about your input. We don't care about your 30 years of experience. We don't care about anything." This little guy came out who had two years of experience, and these two other guys, and we took pictures, and we all went back to the health department office, and we all talked about this. I'm just guessing that's what happened? Because I've asked for these pictures. I've asked for field notes. If they're willing to answer your question. If they're willing to say, "Okay, we have to change." If they're not, if they tell you upfront that they're not willing to change, then I agree with Mr. Chapman, they need to go and we need to find somebody else. But I don't really know, I don't know what they'd say to answer your question.
So honestly, at the end of the day, when you have a discrepancy between two parties, a third party...
I agree.
Is probably the safest way to go when, when two parties can't come together. So is that, would that be a suggestion that you would...
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Barnhart, are you going to be able to pull these folks together and have this conversation? Do you want help?
No, no. Well, we get to meet with them next week, right?
Well, no, next week. They won't come in here unless it's a formal meeting. Next week is just discussion amongst this, this council as to how you want to move forward.
Oh, okay, so we don't meet with the Board of Health? Just us talking about...
Correct.
Leroy's problem and Doug's.
And you asked us the last time when the Board of Health was in here and they brought their attorney with them and you decided not to. You asked for bylaws, a bunch of information which we, which we have that will be in your package next week.
So why can't we have the chairman of the Board of Health and their legal counsel if they want to come in here and have, have a conversation? They don't have to have a public meeting at that point.
No, only if they have a court.
So why can't we have the chairman come in and discuss it? And then that, that person can take you back to their board and have a conversation.
And next week's a public meeting, so it'll be on the agenda. I don't know exactly what comments, but you're welcome to come in.
I mean, anything I can do, I don't, I don't have a problem looking at them and saying...
Well, I think you've got a good bit that you've already done in...
If I can, whatever I can do to help, and it's not hard. If you have vegetation in that home, it's not wet.
I understand.
I think, I think one item would be is of the third party for the mediation part. We got to figure out who's paying for it. I mean, that, that would probably be, you know, if the health department pays for it, well, they're employed by the health department. If the individual pays for it, they're employed by you.
I offered to pay.
I understand, but then again...
Yeah.
You know, so if we, as the council, have to fund it as an independent third party, that's what it has to be.
It doesn't, I mean, if you don't want to do a media, you could do an appeals board. Like we have a zoning appeals board for those two areas that have some zone. There's no reason that you couldn't put an appeals board together.
A knowledgeable appeal.
You know, it could be a three-person appeals board and have certain criteria. One member has to be this, one member has to be that, one member has to be that. It, it seems pretty easy to me.
No, yeah, it sounds easier. But, you know, it's, it's okay. It's, it's okay, but...
Something has to be done.
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, our health department, they do a lot of things across this county. And, and we've, we as a council, I think, have had a really good relationship with them. We just, we just have this issue that needs to be talked about and resolved.
Thank you so much.
Call me if you need me.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the agenda except for items from the public. Anybody from the public? Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, Pro Town. I'd like to move to recess.
I have a motion. We are in recess.
Thank you.